All right, let's go ahead and get going. Welcome to this Monday, December 9th, 2019, Twalton City Council Work Session. Our first thing on the agenda tonight is streetlight conversion. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Council.
These guys are way closer than normal, I don't know. Woo! We can throw stuff at them now.
Nick Weston-Yorke. Jeff Boggs. Jeff Boggs. Thank you. To continue the conversation around the streetlight ownership options.
All right.
This evening, we'll begin with a quick recap of where we're at today and why this conversation is occurring now. We'll go over a summary of the options available to us, pros and cons, and costs. We will address the concerns and questions we've heard from the last meeting we had back in June, and then we will get to the same. So to recap, today, the city of Twalton has just shy of 3,000 streetlights. The majority of those, just over 2,500, almost 2,600, are option B. The city owns those lights, PGE maintains and operates them. A small section, 302, are option A, which is PGE owned and operated, and then 10, which are not in the right of way, are owned by the city. An important note here is that currently, we are paying $296,000 per year for those streetlights altogether, in combination of all three options, and that includes power, operations, and maintenance for those. So what's the issue and why the conversation around LED conversion? The current technology, high-pressure sodium, is no longer supported, so we are having quite a bit of difficulty replacing the lights and light technology, so they need to upgrade. It's kind of being forced upon us in terms of the lights. And as well, we have a high number, 630 laminated timber poles that are all beginning to reach their end of their useful life, and the risk of their failure as well includes, we would like to address those with the city.
And those are ones we own.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Those 630 poles are owned by the city. The cost to upgrade the poles is estimated at 1.2 million. The cost to upgrade the lights to LED is 1.6 million, so we have this 200, or 2.8 million-dollar expense that we're trying to tackle and looking at options to address. As you recall from the last meeting, we have four ownership options, three options, and then a mix of two of them. Option A, PGE owns and maintains all the poles and lights, so they're the ones that are solely in charge of the lighting business in Twalton. Option B, which is our current option, is the majority of our poles. The city owns the assets, the two poles, and PGE maintains them. And then, option C is a third option, which we did not spend much time on. The city would take ownership and maintain everything. We don't really know what that expense would be or what that liability is underground, so it wasn't explored in much detail. And what we talked about last time was a hybrid option, which is where the city would own the poles, some of the poles, most of the poles, and PGE would own the lights. We'll get into more of that ownership mixture through the options.
And I'll jump in real quick. So a lot of the presentations, the staff report was very detailed. We tried to keep the presentation so instead of getting the lead on specifically what poles we own, or whatever makes sense, the city owns the poles, PGE owns the lights. Generally, that's true, and so we're trying to come up with simple, we're not, just not dig down.
So, our approach to this evening's presentation and staff report, we worked alongside PGE, determined the upfront costs for each option, so what is required from the city, what would we get from PGE, how would those number, figure out for each of the four options. We identified the pros and cons for each option at the staffing level and operationally, what staff viewed as the best. And then we used the net present value analysis to calculate the lifetime cost for each option. A little bit more on the net present value analysis. Essentially, what it is, is a comparison that allows us to take the life of the asset and bring them back to $20,000, to look at each of them apples to apples, and have a true life cost for each of the options over the 20 years that we assume useful life to be. A couple caveats to that, we define the lifetime for poles as 20 years, because that's what 's used by Seattle and Portland, so it seems to be a very good standard to stick to. And the lifetime for lights, we estimate it at 10 years.
Wow.
Change that if it grew, and that is based on current technology trend in the industry. And for that analysis, we assume a 3% annual increase in our payments to PGE, keeping up with inflation, which is pretty comparable to what we've seen historically.
Okay, so I'll jump in real quick. So 3% would be essentially, we don't see a rate increase every year from PGE, sometimes higher, sometimes lower. We also don't see power cost going equal amount every year, so when we're working with PGE, in order to compare these, each of these alternatives, so we're really truly looking at apples to apples, we estimated about a 3% increase every year for life of, for 20-year life of our city. And so we're really trying again to, we could have been really precise and said, this year it's going to be this much, this year it's going to be this much. At the end of the day, 3% a year, whenever you look at over 20 years, worth three dollars. So the other thing while we're on this slide, so net present value, so what we, there's several different ways to look at money analysis. So one way would be to basically take our average annual cost that we're paying today, add 3% a year to it, look out and inflate it over 20 years, and say, what's that 20-year cost? That's one way to do it. That's really challenging whenever you start looking at today's dollars upfront, like that initial amount that PGE invested, or the initial 2.8 million dollars that we have to pay, so that really messes with those calculations, makes it really kind of complicated and hard to understand. So there's an approach of net present value analysis. And so that's the engineering coming out. In Van, we use this whenever we're trying to size a water pipeline, to figure out what the best option for this water pipeline was, because it allowed us to essentially do that inflation, but bring it all back into today's dollars, so we can look at the amount PGE is giving us, we can look at the amount we would have to pay, and we can look at all of those payments over 20 years, in today's dollars. So that's really what the math is. So if you were to think like a $536,000 a year, and then add 3% a year for 20 years, the number ends up being quite as big as what we're talking about. So we did, instead of doing that, we said, it gets really complicated whenever you start having like mid-year increases or mid-life increases, which you'll see whenever we get to the table, the ones we operate require essentially a $1.6 million payment in today's dollars for about 10 years. So if you're using that process, you can figure out if that's worth then, you can figure out how much these upfront costs are worth then, and really try and go to the end. What is common in engineering economics is to bring that all back into today's dollars. So we're just comparing everything essentially to $20, $20. So that's a long explanation of this slide, trying to figure out how do we, how do we explain our methodology without jumping into the spreadsheet and literally walking through the cells of the spreadsheet. When we get to discussions, feel free to ask me more than quickly, I'll get my hand and say anything. But that's a start.
So, summary of our ownership options. Option A, briefly run through these with you. PG would pay us approximately 1.6 million for the assets that we currently own that have useful life left to them. Take ownership of all of those assets. PGE would then be responsible for and pay for the conversion of our streetlights from old HPS technology to LED technology, and they would as well replace the 630 billion pound-pounds. So we essentially take a monetary payment for the assets that still have life left. They would take ownership of all of our poles and streetlights in the right of way, and then convert all of our failed assets at their expense upfront. And then that cost would be built into the monthly fee that we would pay PGE. That monthly cost would be $44,726,000. That covers the cost of power.
Or thereabouts.
Yes, estimate. Not trying to be too precise. Covers the cost of the power as well as the operation and maintenance of the poles and the life cost to replace the lost assets. And the lifetime cost is $0.9 million. Twenty nineteen dollars. You don't have to remember any of these, because we summarized them all.
We have a nice table, bringing it all together.
Hopefully, he's taking notes, trying to remember what he said in his summary.
Option B is exactly what the city has now for those 2,500, 2,600 poles. The city would continue to maintain ownership, and PGE would maintain, or yes, the city would maintain ownership, PGE would continue to do the maintenance and operation. The difference here is the city would need to be responsible for funding the replacement of those HPS lights and those 630 wood poles. Currently estimated at $2.8 million from PGE to get those assets replaced. And then, another thing to note is in approximately 10 years, and about thereabouts, moving forward every decade or so, we would be responsible for the switch out of the lights to whatever that new technology may be, or basically similar, it's a predicament that we're in now with the HPS conversion strategy.
And so for comparison purposes, because it's tempting to say we just wouldn't convert those lights, well, each one, in order to keep the analysis the same, we assume that in 10 years, under any option, we would upgrade to whatever the technology is to stay current, right? So that, then if all the, all four, or all three options were with A, B, and hybrid, apples to apples. So we assume if just in option B, we would pay for that, and in option A, hybrid, we would pay for it.
The monthly cost of option B would reduce to $10,000 to $261, or thereabouts, to cover the power cost, but we would have that $2.8 million in capital expense included. And the lifetime cost for option B, which is option B, is $7 million.
Does that include the 2.8 capital cost?
Yes.
Twenty to twenty-two. And then the hybrid option. So, under the hybrid option, we would essentially mix A and B ownership between poles and lights. So the city would retain ownership of the existing city-owned poles until they reach their end of their useful life. So all of those poles, we would have sold for the 1.6 million. We would retain those until they fail. PGE would take ownership of all of our lights, because they are considered end-of-life assets at their HPS magnitude, and convert those at their expense, pass that cost along. So it's either option A, hold the main option B. PGE would replace those 630 laminated timber poles, so those would be passed along to PGE as well, under option A ownership. Given the 630 poles, given the lights, they would replace those for us. The monthly cost would be around $29,800, $20,900. That would cover the cost of the power and operation and maintenance of the poles, as well as the built-in replacement cost for the option A assets, so all our lights and those 630 failed poles would be rolled into this combination, partially in a person-to-person B pricing. And that lifetime cost is estimated at six, six point?
Six point nine million.
Six point nine million dollars for 20 years, in 2019 dollars. Do you have any options, pros and cons? Option A has a number of pros. We get an upfront payment from PGE for our existing assets, so we realize the value of those upfront, help offset the increase on the costs. That results in no payments to PGE for the first three years, so that 1.6 million essentially covers those costs for the first three years. No end-of-life cost for the city, no upfront capital cost for the city, so we give them all of our failed assets. They would place those at their cost, and true to build that back to us in a stabilized monthly rate. No capital investments during the lifetime of our streetlights. And when new technologies do emerge, PGE would replace those at their cost. So we wouldn't be faced with that decision that we mentioned earlier.
And we would pay for that, we'd just pay for it.
Yes. All through option A, that cost to those assets, which is built in and stabilized for a long period. The cons to this is the most expensive lifetime cost of the options, because all of that conversion is happening on the front end, and it is the most expensive annual cost as well, for the same, the same reasons. So we're expediting the transition, and that pushes that cost up a bit in the 20-year life. Option B, which is our current option, is the least expensive, because we realize that lower monthly cost that we, that we see through PGE from the transition over to LED. But the caveat there is that we have the monthly payment. So it's the least expensive lifetime, it's the least expensive annual cost, and we would, this is the option where we would realize the most power-saving, just financially, for the LED switch. The cons to this are the 2.8 million that's looming to switch over the poles and lights, the mid-life capital cost to replace the LED lights with whatever new technology is emerging on the market in 10 years from now, which is estimated, everything we're doing is in 2019 dollars, so we estimate it the same as the light estimate is today, 1.6 million converted. There is a large future end-of-life cost, so we, once we pay the 2.8 million to convert these end-of-life assets, these poles and lights, in 20 years, we're going to be confronted with the same looming costs, or timing of these pole replacements would be similar. So we'll have the same decision to make again in 20 years, or looking at conversion, an alternative ownership option at that time. And it does require significant staff time to maintain this, this ownership option and keep the program going in terms of coordination with repairs and operation of PGE, and sourcing parts and materials, and streetlight surveys, the staff time that goes into the ownership that PGE would be taking. And then there is the hybrid option. No end-of-life cost for the city, because we take the end-of-life assets and transition to PGE today, also resulting in no capital costs for the city upfront, and it is a little bit less expensive than the option A, because we're retaining some of those assets under our ownership until they fail, so we're staggering that cost increase as we step into option A a bit more slowly. The cons for this, it will require more staff time than an option A, what it's preparing itself to, and it's just again for the transition of the ownership between the poles and management of, conversion of those assets and maintaining them while they're still under our ownership. And another con is the first-year annual payment is significantly more than our current budget, and that is going to be increased for the assets we transition over. Comparing the costs. Here's where we bring it all back together, so you didn't have to take notes. Our net present value analysis breaks down into three options. We didn't look at C, as I said earlier, we did the negatives and the negatives. And so what we have here is we took upfront revenue, upfront costs, so what would PG give us for option A, what would the city be required to put out for option B, looked at the 10-year replacement cost for those assets, and essentially built out a 20-year life cycle for all of our lights in 2019 dollars.
Twenty twenty, yes.
Twenty twenty dollars. Factoring in the revenue and the replacement cost that we would have for both of them. What we landed on was a pretty close call between the three. You'll see the biggest discrepancy between the three is option A is a little bit more expensive, which we moved to in pros and cons, and that's because we just accelerate that cost all the way up until the conversions, whenever we switch those lights over. We were essentially beginning to pay that larger monthly payment, that $44,000 PGE, right away, rather than staggering into it, which the hybrid cost did have us doing. But, still relatively close, it's 1.8 million dollars over the 20-year life span, the difference between the two options.
So on this chart, so monthly payment, so that number came from PGE, so we use, we worked closely with them to find out what our monthly charge would be for each one of the options. So for option A, it's $44,000 a month, so it's significantly higher than the other two on a monthly basis, and that is because they're doing a bunch of work upfront for us, so replacing the 630 poles and converting all of our lights to LED. So that's, that's reflected in that $44,000. And then, come on, and then $10,000 for option B, because we would need to come up with 2.8 million dollars to do the same work. So, we're saying that's an upfront work immediately, in all three scenarios, it's whether it's 2020 or whether it's 2022, you know, in that timeframe, we're assuming the same thing, so we can compare apples to apples. And so you can see a significantly lower monthly charge. And then, for the hybrid option, it's somewhere between about $30,000 monthly again, because PGE would go through, they would basically pay the cost of replacing the poles and replacing our lights. And so, so that's, that's where you see the difference in the monthly charges. So those came from our conversations with PGE. We're down to the dollar, but that's not really very exact. It'll be approximately $10,260, $44,000, $29,000. And then the annual, multiply that by 12, we get the annual payment, because we wanted you 12 months for 20 years, so we just look at 20 years. And so we're getting this annual payment amount, and we're taking that annual amount, looking at it 20 years, and bringing all of that increased cost back. So we're paying cost of that, $20, $20, incorporates the upfront revenue, if there's such a thing on each one of the options, it incorporates that initial, initial cost that we would have to pay, and incorporates the change replacement cost for each one of the options. And so you can see about $2 million, option A is about $2 million higher than option B, and about 1.9 million that color is there, and the hybrid option will work in today's dollars over life of the assets. And that's the cost in terms.
Transitioning, any questions that we heard from you all on June 24? We had a question regarding small cell revenue, what does that, what does this have on lease fees for our poles? We had a conversation with PGE and determined that there would be likely no impact on the ability to collect lease fees for small cell actions on our poles. When a carrier comes in looking to attach to a pole, then we have to replace that pole and sort of sturdy your foundation on it, support the weight of the new equipment. And at that time, when they pay to put in a new pole, which would be required of a carrier to replace that asset to accommodate their infrastructure, we could take ownership of that pole back, and then charge it back with lease fee if we decided that was something we wanted to do. So, transfer them back at the time of those replacements, and then we continue to collect fees. So no impact.
And a little nuance here, so, so no matter who owns the pole, we collect an act. So we have, we figured out before, we collect no matter what.
Yes.
Right? And then what we're talking about is an additional lease fee. So if it's a PGE pole, they would charge the carrier an additional lease fee. PGE has determined, at least in our conversations with PGE, that if a small cell company were to come in and attach to their pole, they would be new. So we at the city haven't made that determination yet. So we convert all our poles to PGE, somebody comes in, attaches to a PGE pole, PGE says you have to replace that pole, so they do. And then at that point, we would have the option of working with PGE and actually taking back home to that pole. So, so at that, and then, if we have a lease fee in place, then we could also charge the lease fees, so we charge our active fee and recharge fees. So that's the nuances, really important to understand why they're missing the impact. And so that's, that's the end of the question.
There was a question regarding the impacts of selling streetlights. And we determined that there is no negative impact on the city's credit rating or capacity from offloading these assets. They're a depreciating asset, and we typically do not realize any value for sell these assets when they, when they're of value. And we can always go back, so PGE is a very good partner, and we always have the ability to transition these poles back into our ownership should we choose so in the future. Rate stability? There was a question about whether or not our rates become less stable under option A. They do not become less stable than they currently are under option B. The ability to increase rates from both ownership options exists, whether it's A or B, or those, or however, we just won't, those ownership schedules can be increased. I think it's important to note that the Oregon Public Utility Commission oversees rate increases and approves those before they're pushed out to municipalities. So there's a, there's a regulatory body that's overseeing those rate increases. Typically, we went back and looked at some historic, 3% is what we've seen for the energy cost in terms of increases in the ownership itself, so for the lifecycle cost of a pole under the options of PGE retaining ownership, there has been almost no movement in those rates since 2015, the numbers for the last option. And I think it's important to note, PGE has a 8% cost recovery built into option A, so their cost recovery is very stable under option A as well, so it's a very predictable rate model. It has an oversight, regulatory oversight that it goes through. They were very candid with their calculation of the use, so we feel that we are as susceptible to the out-of-bounds rate increases, and it's a very stable methodology that they use.
So to summarize, they can just raise rates willingly, I mean, we have some control there.
And when will the poles and lights be replaced? This question was posed under the option A ownership panel. And the question, or the answer is as soon as funding can be secured, PGE can generally get funding rather quickly. So they were looking at about two to three years for total completion, once they, once they know that's our directive, and they will start moving forward with securing the payment for the city of Twalton. I think it's important to note that those failed assets that have liability, those wood poles and those HPS lights would be converted right away to wood poles immediately, and, sure. And our recommendation, so staff recommends not staying with option B due to the large upfront cost at 2.8 million dollar looming expense is a lot, and all the other options, all the other present costs. So we would recommend converting to either option A or the hybrid option, and it's a model to begin to get those assets converted, converted.
Questions? Valerie.
Oh, first of all, I want to say thank you for bringing this together. It was very, I guess accountants and engineers are similar in their comprehension of, but the little chart and the little pros and cons are great. I was wondering, one thing on the hybrid option, it says there's some staff time that would still be involved, and can you give like an approximation, maybe just in hours or like FTEs?
So it's hard to guess hours, but we can say, we can tell you what we do.
Okay.
So we work with PGE, so any kind of pole breaks, has a problem, we usually come to us first, and we reach out to PGE every weekly, we get a report from PGE.
Get a weekly report.
And we work on that report to figure out, maybe one's a pole, we need to maintain a pole, we need to replace a pole, same thing goes for lights. And so we have, you know, a variety, as the HPS lights get older, we have more go out. I think in our last street survey, we had 60 HPS lights that had gone out for a round town. And so, it's, so that's the other piece that we do, is we also, quarterly, we send somebody out at night to drive the city, work its streetlights, and see what's out.
Okay.
And so there's just, there's a lot of just sort of ongoing activity and coordination with PGE, that if we didn't own the streetlights in particular, we might have to go do that, they would go to that and verify what's working. And so that's really under hybrid, and if we kind of give up that piece, it would be nice.
Yeah.
It's hard to quantify the actual numbers.
Okay, that gives us some sense of. And then my other question is, just, if we go out 20 years from now, we're doing this again, is it, will we essentially, like, A and hybrid would just be a monthly fee, whereas B, we would once again be out several million dollars for poles if we stayed with B?
Under this assumption, using net present value, assuming a 20-year life, it could be longer, it could be shorter, but 20 years is what other cities are usually using as kind of their calculation number. So yes, under option B, it would be our responsibility then to go back instead of going now. Now what are we doing? Under hybrid and option A, PGE, they would be looking forward, essentially continuing to take part in the process.
Bridgette.
I, sort of a follow-up to Valerie's question, when you figure out these numbers, did staff time go into, that's, that's what I thought. So, there's costs on top of these that are embedded in from staff, right?
I tried to highlight that in the pros and cons. I don't know if it required more or less staff time, how many assets are owned by Green and failure rates, and a lot of assumptions, it's hard to quantify what that would look like.
Right. But it would look like some money.
It would.
Yeah. So, and then I guess my other question is, for the hybrid model, is the timeline the same as far as replacing the poles and the?
For purposes of the analysis, we assume the timeline's the same. I think when we were here last time, we talked about some of our wood poles, 40, you've got some.
Yeah.
But from a, in order just to get to apples to apples in today's dollars, we assume the same lifetime. For all intents and purposes, they're going to behave the same, whether it's end-of-life is 20 years, or the life is 30 years.
Oh, I meant forgetting them off.
You're talking about the 630 wood poles and?
I mean, installation time, yeah.
Yes, yes, because we give them those failed assets today and both of those options.
Both of those options.
And they will tackle them in the same timeline.
Okay. And, and then I guess my other question is just a completely different question, which is, is there, do we already see something in the future that replaces what we're using, what we're going to be going into? So we're going into LED, and I know we're not replacing gas, right?
So we might go natural gas, no. So what PGE says is they're looking at LED lights today, it's kind of, you know, it's fairly early, and so they're just, they're anticipating 10 years, technology's going to change, have changed enough, that we're all going to want to switch to the new LED, whatever the new more efficient. whatever the new more efficient LED is in 10 years. And so that's really what we assumed, and then to be equal, we assume the same thing in all three options, and said in 10 years, and maybe it's longer than 10 years, maybe it's less than 10 years, but, but the idea is that everybody's assuming that LED light technology itself is going to change, it'll likely still be LED.
Okay.
But it may be more efficient, it may have more capabilities, if we don't anticipate today.
Hyper-efficient LEDs.
Listen, there
Okay, thank you.
Going, Bridget's asking, my last time I was talking to PG, there's a change in the color spectrum, there's the envision coming down the line that a better wavelength than what they're, they're using right now, that's better, it doesn't screw up the birds and stuff like that, yeah, yeah.
And it just wasn't ridiculous, those are the, we just made that assumption based on PGE recommendation, and then all options, we can do wholesale.
Other questions? Paul?
Of course, I have questions. I have a lot of questions because I'm confused. So, well, first off, thanks for putting in all the time and explaining it. My, the one thing that kind of threw me was the current, you put the current payment as an annual, and then you put going forward as a monthly, so I had to whip out my calculator, which I don't like doing, because I usually make mistakes. But how are we paying for that right now? And you may have answered this question before, but I just don't remember, is that on the city, like on our water bill and a part of that, that whole statement, or is it on a PG&E statement, or is it just part of the tax rate that goes to pay annual payment to PG&E? PGE, sorry, I'm still in Southern California.
We make an annual payment to them, don't we? Or no?
We pay them monthly, we have a monthly payment, and we give bills for all our different streetlights on a monthly basis, and pay
Right.
Monthly all the costs, our
Right, it's a monthly.
All the structures, all in our monthly bill.
And we pay that out of road operating, correct?
Correct, yes. And a one-seventh of that, one-seventh of the road utility fee goes to pay streetlights, the rest comes out of the road operating.
Does that answer your question, Counselor?
So, if I heard right, he's sitting way, way, way in the back without a microphone, so I can't hear him. One-seventh comes out of the road utility fee?
Correct. So one-seventh of the road utility fee gets transferred to the road operating fund for streetlights, that's part of that ordinance. The whole payment comes out of the road operating fund, a one-seventh of the revenue from road utilities.
Is that what covers it though, one-seventh is, covers it? So what are the, what are the residents of Tualatin currently paying, how are we paying for this light? Are we paying through our city tax? Are we paying through the, a combination of city tax and road utility tax? Or actually that's a fee?
It comes out of the gas tax. So the road operating fund, mostly the gas tax funds, funding for the gas taxes being stabilized now.
Okay, so that, that's just, so it's just a budgetary item then, that the residents for the most part don't, wouldn't necessarily save?
Correct.
Right, they're paying PG, but they're not on the city side.
So currently, but current, so then I was confused, because currently we're paying around, in round numbers, true round numbers, $25,000, and that was from your 267 annually and 27,000 annually for option B poles on your little summary sheet, right, I think it's later on the first page, at the very bottom, so he currently pays an annual charge. So, so I'm wondering where for option B then, we got the $10,000 cost that would be going forward. Because assuming very little changes, why would our payment get cut in half? Or am I missing something?
It would be a reduction in energy use due to the transition of LED lights.
Reduction in energy. I knew you guys had a good answer. So the second question I have is, I don't, and I'm hoping, Don, that this was just for terms of simplicity, that we're receiving an upfront payment from PGE of whatever that number is, I don't, I don't have it in front of me anymore, but 2.7 million or 1.6, 1.6. So 1.6 million, we're receiving an upfront payment from them. Now would that not though, Don, go into, we're not going to use it to offset and mess up our budget, correct? We're going to just kind of put it in reserve and then it'll come out so that three years from now, we're not trying to figure out how to cover a shortfall in our budget?
Correct, we would set that aside.
Okay, so this was just for terms of simplicity, that we wouldn't, technically we wouldn't be paying any fees for three years, but we really are paying fees, and we're going to use that money as a, I'm hopeful, as a reserve going forward for, as additional costs or whatever.
That's correct, we would be paying if we just
Okay. Because the way I read that, oh, sorry to interrupt, the way I read that was that PGE would then not pay us 1.6 million, but we just deduct the payments is, is how I infer that, so that's why I wanted a clarification on that. Okay, and that, and then, yeah, and I think it was already brought up about the, the cost to the city in terms of workforce, because, I mean, that's a real cost, correct?
Yes, make lots of checks.
So then, then can we, once we do that, do we then lay him off, or does he?
No, as explaining earlier, I look at, we have this pole bucket, and the bucket's always overflowing
Right.
With the amount of worker we have, and so whenever we take something out of the bucket, other stuff on his workload just fills up that void. So asset management's probably the next big thing in the way, you get asset management.
But it's not just Nick's time, I mean, people drive around, the crews drive around and look at the lights, and we have a variety, there's some engineering that goes into it or, like
Yeah, there's, it touches the numbers today.
Yeah.
And operations engineering, is that all we believe in?
No, I, I get that. Now, my final question, the, I'm confused, it, it sounds too easy, and so that always makes me suspicious, that magically PGE, when we get 5G and 5G is definitely, well, maybe not coming, who knows? But when it comes and the, and the transistors and the little packets go on the poles, we're just going to get them back at what they, at what their costs were, or is there going to be a fair market value determination, or how, and what would those, how would those costs be determined to take back the pole?
So, so the way that I understand it is, when the small cell comes in, they pay to replace the pole, the small cell rate. So PGE is not out anything to replace the pole. So it would be just like if they came into one of our poles and asked them to replace the pole, they would pay for that. So in this case, PGE happens on the pole the day they come in, they replace the pole, and then we have the option, essentially, assuming that asset back into our, our inventory.
Even though we didn't pay for it?
We are responsible for maintaining that, depending on what our lease agreement with the small cell.
But we didn't pay for the pole, but we'd somehow retain ownership from it?
Because the small cell company would pay for the pole.
But maybe I'm confused, but I thought the whole presentation we saw on the small cell technology was that they, their whole pitch was they're using existing poles.
Correct, and he said that, so what we understand in PGE is that they now have a requirement that when the small cell goes on their poles, they would need to replace some poles.
Interesting, all right.
Other questions? Robert?
All right. I'm going to start with math, which is terrifying, but I just want to understand this, because it seems like a pretty important decision that we're making. The 3% increase that was factored in on option A every year, the 536,000, is that year one or is that year three when we start paying?
That's year one.
Year one, okay. So now I got out my calculator, and I did a 3% increase every year on 536,000 for 20 years out, right? And I think that still counts as today's dollars, because I didn't, it changed the amount of the currency, just a straight 3% amortization forward, and the total that I get is like 14 and a half million dollars. That's before subtracting the 1.6, but help me understand why 8.8 is the right number and 14.5 is not.
So that's, that's going to be really hard to explain. What I can
Instead of terrified, so.
So, so did you do that for each one of the options? Because that's really, it depends, so you can either do net present value for each option and do that comparison, which is like 8 million, 7 million, or 7 million. Or you could do what you did, and say, okay, 14 million for option A, whatever that same calculation is for option B, and whatever the same calculation is for option B. And then compare those three numbers, and you will see a similar difference.
On a percentage basis.
Yeah, what we're really looking for is the difference between, the cost difference between the three options, either at the end of their life or today. And so that's really, so you have to do, regardless of which way you do the calculations, you've got to do the same calculation for all three options
Right.
To be able to compare all three.
And I'll admit that I didn't do them on B and C, so I don't know if that's
We scrambled moments before the meeting, and then realized we didn't have time to sit down and actually do that specific math. So net present value is effectively looking at the same thing, same, if 536,000 dollars goes up 3% a year, assuming a 3% a year increase from PGE, and then we also, there's also inflation included, goes way out to the end, and basically brings everything back then to today's dollars, and says, ignoring inflation, taking that 3% a year increase, taking upfront cost, taking whatever mid-year cost is, and it basically does the exact same calculation for all three options, so that we can, so we can essentially compare apples to apples. And we could do it the other way, we could just take the monthly cost, inflate it all the way out and compare all three options again, it would have been a similar
Okay, well, we, we can, we can check figures later.
It takes that inflated amount which we came to
Yeah.
Backs it into today's dollars, so it's not inflated out to that amount, so it's just putting it down, what it would, that total amount would be in current dollars. So what you added, added up, you got to inflated amount.
Yeah.
That's just taking that inflated value and moving it, analyzing it, what today's net cost would be in today's dollars without any kind of inflation.
So because I'm an engineer, I asked Don to
Right, well, if Don did the math, then I'm, I'm okay with that.
So I had that exactly.
So, no, 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 because I have a very important question for you. So we pay $300,000 today with our option B, option A, option C mixture. In, presuming we adopt option A, and our annual payment, presuming these are the right numbers, 536,000, 640 times 3% for two years, so let's just say the first year for payment is $600,000, I don't even know if that's close, just for argument's sake. Today we pay $300,000, where does the additional $300,000 come from to make that payment?
We would be allocating, we, we don't spend everything in our budget, so it goes in the reserves and the fund balance, so we would not be putting as much into that. We would be looking at what else we're paying out of that fund and not be refund, we might have to look at the road utility fee and determine whether that allocation, one-seventh to the ordinance, would have to change, but you're not looking at a, you know, just a finite amount of money out there. So we would have to analyze the budget in future years to determine, they have priorities. We currently budget around $100,000, $100,000 a year for pole replacement. We could use that to offset the increase in the monthly cost, because we'd no longer be obligated to fund our replacement of failed assets.
Okay.
That would take a little bit off the top of that increase.
So, and as a general matter, does our road utility fee or the road operating fund, does it increase in revenue generation by 3% a year?
I'd have to go back and look at what the percentage is, it does grow a little bit by our population, because we get approximate or capital amount, and then depending on gas tax money that's made of all that, and then we look at what fees index now, so we're seeing a little bit of growth from that one-seventh.
But much less than 3%, historically at least.
Historically.
Yeah, okay, so I'm just worried, I mean, again, I think it's a great idea to take some of our costs and shift them off of our balance sheet, but I'm worried about where the revenue comes from to pay for it, maybe not five years down the road, but 25 years down the road. So that's my outlook on option A. Option B, Nick, thanks, but can you explain a little bit more how you figured power savings? And I thought Counselor Morrison had a great question, and I wanted to ask too, because if we're paying $300,000 today, and it's $123,000 if we take over ownership of 300 poles, how do we cut our payment in half?
We keep ownership of almost 3,000 poles.
Well, I, I have us owning 2,500 poles.
Right, and so then we own them all
And PGE owns 300.
Right, so it's the streetlights, so right now, most of our streetlights are high pressure, so
Yeah.
Our understanding is the energy costs associated with those. Whenever we go to LED, there's a significant cost savings, and that reflects a minimum of that.
Okay.
So we would no longer pay them for maintenance?
Yep.
Or we would pay them for maintenance operation, excuse me, we would realize all the energy savings from the LED conversion from all 3,000 streetlights.
So cut our electricity bill by half?
Yeah, some number.
About that, a lot. Substantial increase.
Okay.
From 200 to 120?
From 300,000 today.
300,000 to 120, so basically by half.
Yeah, okay. And that same savings is reflected in option A and option C?
Yes, so the other, there's one other nuance, so because in option B, we're literally taking 2.8 million dollars out of the bank, a portion of that goes to the capital cost for lights, another portion of that goes to the capital cost for pole replacement?
Mm-hmm.
So once we replace those 630 poles, right, that's not, that's no longer been included in PGE's cost, monthly cost, is that fair?
That is correct.
And any other options, it would be included in costs.
Okay, okay. The small cell piece, and this is minutia, but, and this question for the city attorney, does our ordinance read that the pole owner is the collector of the fee, or is it the owner of the right of way?
Of, of which fee, I'm sorry?
Of the attachment fee.
So this
Not sure.
I'll just do that.
Okay.
So the, the city, so the attachment fee that the city charges, we would collect that from the, whoever's utilizing that attachment. So they would come in, have to get a permit from us in order to do that, and we would collect that, that fee from them.
Okay, so doesn't matter who owns the pole?
Correct.
Okay. The lease fee that they were talking about, that PGE may charge, or maybe has decided to charge now, has the FCC regulated that the same way they have attachment fees? Have they made any
So they have not, because it's private, private property with, with PGE, so they have not issued anything related to that, but it's certainly an area that they've restricted cities severely on what they can and can't do in this area. But so far, they have not done anything with the utility owners themselves.
Okay, so it'll be written into our agreement that we can purchase these assets back at any time? Is that accurate? I think I read that in one of the lines in the spreadsheet, or not spreadsheet, the presentation.
We have the opportunity to buy our whole back there.
Okay, and is that at a predetermined rate, current market value? How does one figure out?
Current market value? Pardon? Appreciated asset value? I think the 5G question
Oh, purchasing poles then?
I know, yes, but it's going to be a little bit cloudy, because as you guys mentioned, carriers actually pay for the poles and installation, probably both scenarios, whether the city owns the pole or PGE owns the pole. So I think there would be some cloudiness in how we figure if there is actually even a cost back to purchase, because the PUC would look at this and say, PSG has become whole at the end of this, but they would say, did you pay for the pole? At this point, the carriers would pay for any new poles, and so I think that there is, it hasn't been brought up yet, and I'm not really certain of how.
Okay.
Kevin, PGE.
Thank you, Kevin. So, final question, and, so I see in option A that we're getting a 1.6 million dollar payment, and it's designated for the poles themselves, but nobody really believes the poles are worth 1.6 million dollars, right? I mean, they're just aluminum and wood and no big thing, right? So is what PG is paying for, is it the right to collect that 8% built-in cost in terms of future services and rates and all that? Is that accurate or is that inaccurate?
So we didn't get into sort of how PGE makes
Well, so, and the reason I'm asking is that in option C, we all end up in the same place, it's just over a different timeline, but they're buying the same thing, they're buying the right to collect the fee in the future, right? And so my question is, if they're going to pay 1.6 million dollars on option A, then why wouldn't they pay something upfront on option C? Because we're effectively getting to the same place.
In the hybrid, in the hybrid model, which I think we would report to the PUC, we would hang on to those poles until they're in need of replacement.
Right.
There would be no value when we transfer to PGE.
Right.
PGE deleted the 1.6 million dollar value on those poles based on the estimated life those poles have left, so they took their installation date, assumed the 20-year life. Not all of them are 20 years old yet, so there is some value
Right.
That they assign to those assets. They would, they would compensate us for that if we gave them those assets before the 20-year mark or thereafter. So under the hybrid model, we would keep them until they're going to fall, or they need replacement, or they're damaged to the point that they need to go. When we transfer to PGE, there's no value there, because they need to be replaced immediately. If we transfer all of our poles today, we have a number of them that don't need replacement for some determined amount of time.
Right, but a fairly short timeline is what, I mean, I took 630 to be replaced in the first year, and then the remainder, or some factor of the remainder, to be replaced in the next three years.
So, yeah, the 630 are laminated timber poles.
Yeah.
Really old.
Okay.
So those are the ones that are sort of imminent replacement. And any other poles we have in town, they're aluminum or fiber latches, so those have longer life.
Some are older than others. I, I understand that.
Two- to three-year replacement estimate is for end-of-life assets.
Mm-hmm.
So the wood poles and the HPS lights, there are some poles that would not be replaced in the first three years by PG because they're still in good shape and they still have a useful life to realize. Those would stay until they need replacement.
Okay.
So the two-to-three-year estimate is for all of our HPS lights, so all of our lights themselves and the 630 wood poles.
Okay. And to be clear, I'm not suggesting anything is untoward going on here. I'm just trying to understand why a payment would be made on option A and not on option C when, again, I think we get to the same place, it's just a matter of one year versus 10, 12, 15, whatever it is.
I think it's important to note that they wouldn't replace all of our assets, all of our lights and poles in the right-of-way in three years. It would just be those that are determined to be end-of-life.
So there, so there could be like 1,000 poles that don't get replaced for like 10 years.
There were something, yeah.
And that's where the 1.6 million comes?
Yes. That's exactly it. Some of the poles have value today that were basically PG buying that value.
Right. And perhaps it's the, the slide in the presentation that says these poles aren't really worth anything, right? They're depreciable assets. So maybe that's what I'm reading into it is that, you know, they're really not worth anything other than the, you know, if you look at them at straight materials, they're not worth $1.6 million, not even close.
At the end of their life, they were zero.
Right.
That's, that's the exception behind that. Yes. Today, there's some value and PG is willing to pay us for that value. So that's, that's the delta that's going to get between.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? I have a few. All right. Going on the, the hybrid option, the second bullet, the second con, isn't that something if we were to decide to do that? What's the timeline for maybe adopting it? Could this, some of where Don had a year or two to make that delta up, start saving money, we could address that issue? I mean, we don't have to do this like next year. If given time, Don can make up somehow, maybe I pull out of his back pocket, the difference.
The conversion happens whenever we decide.
Right.
As a city, it happens. The, the issue we run into is the, the wood poles are a bit of a liability in terms of their increase in risk of failure and the difficulty we're going to have sourcing replacement parts as lights.
Right.
It's gotten substantially more expensive than the current budget allows for.
So we don't.
Yes, we could.
We could do it, but we don't want, whereas.
But there's other issues.
There's, it balances out with, there's positive and negative. Okay, thanks. On the staff time required to manage, if the older pole, like when you're talking about the, the staff that goes around, drive around 12th and at night, in a hybrid option, why would we have staff going around? Because as those poles die off, they become a PG pole. So over time, there's no reason for staff to do that anymore, correct?
Correct. Under the hybrid option, it gets better and better.
Yeah.
Option A is almost immediately.
Right.
We stop having to spend a little.
Right. But in a hybrid.
You're phasing it away.
You're phasing it down.
And if you end, everything ends good.
Correct. Right. Okay.
Same as option A.
That's what I thought. Right? And then on, going back to this. The dollars one, so the height, I mean, to me, in my mind, it's the hybrid option is the way to go, but that's just me thinking A, you know, over time costs more. I'm just trying to think, what, besides those two cons, is that the only two cons staff came up with for the hybrid option? That's it?
That's why we said, options A or hybrid is, we kind of left it out there as.
Okay.
Really similar. Option A, I guess the one, the one caveat to that is getting $1.6 million upfront and realizing whatever value we have left. It's like selling an old car.
Mm-hmm.
Waiting until it's completely dead and then had to get towed away.
Right.
Option A is selling the car today when it has some value left. Hybrid option is letting the old car deteriorate until somebody just tows it away from certain people.
Yeah. So when we talked internally about this, sorry, when we talked internally about this, and I don't want to speak out of school, but if you pushed us into a corner and asked us to make a decision, we would go with option A because over 20-year time period, $1.8 million, I mean, that's, it's not that much money over 20 years, and we're able to take care of it all upfront. But there are benefits to hy, the hybrid option, and, and so that's why we pretty much left it up to you guys, but the value of not having any staff time associated with it, it's just like getting it off our books and getting that kind of upfront money like has some, has some, you know, it, it's attractive, but if you don't go with, you can go with either one, just not option B.
Yeah. All right. All right. I mean, I could see the, I see the benefit of option A, you just tag it out, we're done. But as you mentioned, it does cost a bit more money over 20 years, you know, well, $100,000 or so extra over the 20 years. Whereas hybrid, it saves us money, but you're still in it for five, 10 more years maintaining these poles that could fail. Other questions? Bridget?
I just had a sort of a random question. For the wood poles, are they going to be being replaced with a different material then?
Yeah.
Okay. And.
Aluminum or fiber.
And then, I mean, the only other thing too is, when you're getting money upfront, it's also what you do with the money, if you make investments work that help offset. I just keep going through it in my mind because having staff costs reduced a lot and then also upgrading everything and getting it done, because so it feels far behind to me because it's inefficient. And to be able to get our city more efficient in a more quick way as far as energy goes, sounds like a forward-thinking thing to be doing and sets us up well to be getting more efficient more quickly in the future. And some of the things that I don't understand in future value, present value conversations are durability and energy saving, but what makes me feel better about it is some of the regulatory pieces over this. Because that's just the place where I, I'd love to see the city saving money to go with durability, energy savings, but at the same time to be efficient in what we're doing and how those costs get relayed. And with the regulatory oversight, I guess some of my questions are if it, if there is a big savings, do we realize that in costs maybe that weren't understood or in the, in the future, like when we get to high, hyper-efficient models and things like that? So those are just some of the things that I, I'm thinking about. Because it seems like it would be less expensive, although the materials cost more. So I'm all about, you know, having a way to build something that's going to last longer and is going to be more efficient, which is what it sounds like if you do an investment upfront, you have a chance of kind of building on that. Because having wood poles that are four years old is an interesting situation that we're faced with as a city. So it would help us sort of move forward a little bit in our energy efficiency and durability of our assets. Yeah?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, I do believe that under any of the options, in the future, we would have the opportunity to go back to this option.
That's correct. But there would be costs associated with it.
$1.6 million.
Or whatever, yeah, whatever they are.
Future value of $1.6 million. They're comparing apples to apples in the bottom line. Yes.
Well, actually, not, some of these questions have posed another one, and I didn't run this through T-value and try to figure out the, the time value of the money, but it doesn't seem to me that this is a correct apples-to-apples comparison because you're only, you, you're basically saying it's $15,000 a month more in monthly payments if we go with option A, but we're out of the light business completely, we're clean. But at the end of 20 years, there's $1.8 million differential to, in total, which is $92,000 a year. And so those numbers don't add up, and I know why they don't add up, and the, and that's why I'm wondering if, and I know that our city manager said no option B because of the time commitment, but the, that's the cheapest option to go, but, but that's because we're making an initial outlay of $2.8 million, and I don't think you correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, but I don't think you correctly allocated that 3% time value of money over the life of that capital investment. Am I correct? And am I getting too deep in the, sorry?
So under net present value, so you don't take the $2.8 million and then look at it at the end of life, under net present value approach, you literally assume it's first-year investment.
Right.
And so.
Correct.
So you could get way, but then again, you do that in each one of the different options, $1.6 million upfront. So using a net present value analysis, just really tries to bring everything back to today. If we're spending these dollars today, it comes to light, including under option B, the $2.8 million.
Right. Well, I understand that. And so my point is, is that option A, you're paying a convenience fee for option A, but you're out of the business completely and you're clean. But you also, I don't think the cost differential is as great because you have that $1.6 million, which I'm assuming we are going to invest and then take it out slowly over a period of time to cover the cost. And then you also brought up a very interesting point about what's currently in our budget for the pole replacements at $100,000 a year. And I don't see that, that was news to me. I don't see that anywhere in these calculations. That's a huge savings. That covers the entire 92,000 shortfall or a 20-year period between A and B. And, and by virtue of covering B, then also covers the hybrid cost as well. And so from a financial point of view, A, and a time point of view, it would seem that A is the way to go to get out of the business and be clean of it, as well as have quote-unquote money in the bank to, to help cover your costs and a reduction in the, if I heard you correctly, a reduction in the budget, an overall reduction in the budget, because yes, we're going to pay more on a monthly payment, but we're taking out the $100,000 that we were currently budgeted for pole replacement, correct? No, they can't hear you when you nod.
Yes.
Thank you. We're on radio.
We won't have that in the hybrid either.
Right. And we won't have it in the hybrid either, so, correct.
There is a delta, and there's still going to be an overall increase in P because $2.96 is today, and then we're saying $5.36 in the future, and then we've got another $100,000 in our annual amounts that would drop our annual monthly payment to $4.36 if, you know, we took the $100,000. So there's still a delta, about $100,000 a year delta between what we're paying today and what we'd be paying. And that is very serious meeting that. It's, could be wrong, could be right. But.
But under option A?
But I, but there is, you know.
But under option A.
There's some increase in option.
Right. But under option A, you're receiving upfront money.
And you're also.
Okay. Thank you. So for option A and the two to three years for PG to get out there and replace all the bulbs and stuff, is the two to three years for both A and hybrid or is the two to three years just for option A for total replacement?
It'd be for both under, under the hybrid option, those would be option A.
Okay. So then within three years, everything we swapped out?
For all three options, we just made the assumption.
Just three years.
Three years, three years, take all, in fact, if we need down at the same time.
Okay. Two, three. Okay. Thank you. Valerie?
On the hybrid one option, that con about the, the amount not being budgeted, if I'm looking at this correctly, then we're going to save about $100,000 or so because of the pole replacement. We're still short quite a bit. So where does that money come from? I mean, I know Don's creative, but. And it's just in the first year we're talking, right? That, that's an issue.
On the hybrid option, yeah.
Like if.
Right. So the difference, the difference, the question, and what you're caught with, the difference of what our budget is today and what we'd be paying.
True.
So there again, it'd be like the question we answered earlier, it's, we would be looking at the different priorities in the budget. Gas tax amounts do go up, the road utility, the one-seventh of the road utility fee revenue does increase each year. So how much of that would be made out by, I don't know, it's in front of me, but there is some revenues or, the revenues do increase over a year. Of course, so are cost due, but we're looking at that.
I guess I'm asking is if we, like, if we were to make this decision right now and move forward right away, would there be an issue with coming up with that first year?
We do have contingency in those thoughts that we can go to to make a many difference in the current budget.
Okay.
Other questions? Discussion, guidance? How are people feeling? Start with Paul.
You know, if I'm going to, based on what I know right now, I'd look at option A just because it's a clean break and gets us free and clear of all the, the staff issues. And I, I don't know, I like money in upfront.
Um, for the hybrid option, just because overall, we save the money and we're going to phase out fairly quickly, but it's quite a bit of savings in the long run.
Right. Others? Nancy? Nancy's been quiet.
Yeah. I've just been listening. I think I concur with what Valerie's saying. I appreciate that staff likes option A and is leaning towards option A, but the disparity in the lifetime cost between A and then the hybrid approach, I mean, I kind of can't just get past that. To me, that just seems like such a significant amount of money. And again, I guess over the course of 20 years and in the life of the city, it perhaps isn't that much, but that's kind of where I'm stuck. And the idea that we can achieve the goals we want, we can have it in a somewhat certain sunset of two to three years and be able to, you know, pocket whatever it is, $1.7 million in savings over the lifetime of the project, it kind of really leans me towards the hybrid. Unless there's something of A that's making staff's recommendation so strong that I'm just not understanding.
And that is, that is why we left it, it's just not option B. We feel that strongly about it.
Okay.
It could be A or A.
All right. Thank you.
I'm ready.
Go ahead.
I, I kind of agree with Paul. Mark that down on your calendar. I, I think that having money upfront that we can invest in, I think there's money that isn't showing up in this conversation, that we would be efficient as far as doing things in a quick way, especially if this is the place that we're going to. I think that the, when I'm thinking, thinking it through, I know that it, that that's what it looks like, but when you factor in staff costs and making money on money that's invested and other savings that we're going to be realizing through more efficient energy and costs and those kinds of things, I think that I lean towards option A. But I guess I can say anything but option B, but I can say that too, but I lean toward option A.
Rhea?
I too feel option A is the best way. I'm the type that sell it and let's move on and invest whatever we have, we collected now. I mean, your analogy was pretty actually good when you said about selling an old car. Right now, it has some value, so let's sell it. I mean, we're not getting anything when, once we transfer, if we fade out like hybrid, we're not getting anything. I mean, it's, it's just basically just here it is, it's dead, revive it kind of thing or whatever. it's dead. Revive it kind of thing, or whatever. So for me, option A sounds, sounds like the option that I want to move forward with.
Well, I will disagree. I do not like option A. And I don't think it's money upfront. I think it's money that is put into a reserve and spent in the first three years, and then it's gone. And then we are somewhere looking for a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar budget hole to fill, to pay for streetlights that we used to own and paid half as much for. So if I have to go with one, I'll go with hybrid. And I think that buys us time to, to figure out the rate implications and the budget implications. And again, I just want to repeat, I think there ought to be some sort of upfront payment on the hybrid too, because we're ending up in the same place. And those are just my thoughts.
All right. Because I, I'm still leaning towards hybrid. The, you know, the conservative investor in me is the hybrid. But I understand the positives of A, but in the long run, I lean towards the hi, the hybrid. And that, like Counselor Calog's mentioning, the one point six would be really great. Put hybrid over the top. They get the one point six and get the other benefits of the hybrid model. But I just, I think over time, it'd be, it's a better deal in my mind to do the hybrid. Even though you lose it on that one point six, you're going to pay for it later in higher rates. So do you need a decision tonight, or just direction, or what do you need?
Direction.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I'm hearing four of us at least for hybrid? Valerie?
It sounded like, well, you know, Bridget was talking about the efficiency, but aren't we going to get that?
We're going to get it.
Pretty close on the hybrid as opposed to option A, because those lights will be replaced at a similar time frame? It's just the poles that will, okay, I just want to clarify that.
Can I understand a little bit more about, I want to understand more about the hybrid, the poles, how, so we won't replace all the poles right away, the wooden poles with the hybrid?
So in all cases, we replace the wooden poles. And then under hybrid, we continue to own aluminum and fiberglass poles that every year lose a little bit of value.
Okay, but not as much?
And then our A, we can sell those right upfront.
Okay.
So that's the, that's the difference between the two options, really.
Okay.
Comes down to the poles and when we.
Okay.
When we stop owning them.
Okay.
It's not worth arguing over. It's like.
Yeah.
It's not even worth, it's like, you're talking about, do you want LA or New York State?
I mean, you're just, I, I don't really, at the end of the day, I don't see a difference between the two.
So, is it hybrid, or, I'm here more hybrid?
I'm hybrid.
I'm hybrid.
I'm fine with hybrid.
Okay.
Actually, I, I vote with Robert, the hybrid with the one point six million dollars.
Yeah, like I said, that'd be right over the top. That's, that's the, like, the grand slam. Yeah. Right.
Right, but since I don't see it there, and I, maybe if that's a proposal that we can probably, you know, maybe seek, then I would definitely review that. But right now, there's nothing there that says anything, like, we'll get some value, some money out of, you know, these things that are fading and fading out, so.
Okay. So it sounds like it's hybrid. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Shooting back. All right, so we ran a little long, which is good, because we want to make sure we're making right decisions, so I'm not worried about that. We've only got about ten minutes, so do you want to do council communications after the regular meeting, rather than rushing through?
Yeah.
Okay. So then, let's go ahead and review the agenda for tonight. Any questions on what's on the consent?
Yes.
Right.
I'd like to poll number, item number two, consideration of the City of Twalton fee schedule, please.
Okay. Any other questions about the consent? All right. Who's turns it to the pledge? Because I think the Boy Scouts did it last time. Was Nancy?
Sure.
Nancy? All right. I don't believe we have any proclamations correct. All right, and then, what we'll do is, we'll take a ten-minute break and start back at seven, and we'll have item number two pulled from consent, and then we'll add our council communications roundtable at the end of the regular meeting. So let's go ahead and take a break for ten minutes. We'll start back up at seven o'clock.